Hey. We are preparing to livestream the webinar.
That's what it says. It says you're being livestreamed.
Okay, it's very close. Done redirecting to YouTube. Hey. There's a lag time, so you have to mute us on this side. Okay. Awesome. We are recording. We are livestreaming on YouTube. Chair Bobbitt, you are welcome to start the meeting.
Okay, well, welcome one and all to the June thirteenth. To the June thirteenth Lincoln County Planning Commission Meeting. This is a high meeting, so some of us are present in the chambers here and others are still at home.
And there's Lisa.
And at this time, would Megan call the call?
Yes, okay. Commissioner Cutler?
Yes.
Commissioner Landruck?
Here.
Chair Bobbitt?
Here.
Commissioner Fox?
Here.
Commissioner Bugganagin?
Present. All accounted for.
Excellent. And I know Commissioner Kier was unable to attend this evening, and I don't see Commissioners Spolnick in attendance either.
All right, but that means we do have five Commissioners present for a forum. This is a business meeting. We are not having a public hearing this evening. We have a few items on our agenda, including some draft. We'll be calling these amendments to the Lincoln County Code, as well as two sets of minutes from previous meetings. Let's start with those because that will be short and sweet. So first up would be the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. Does anybody have any issues or nods with that or a motion to approve those minutes?
A move that they be approved as presented is Terry.
Thank you, Terry. In a second.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Dick. So all those in favor, either shout out if you're on the livestream or here say as well.
Hi.
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 Right, and Terry raised his hand in approval. There are no abstentions. Those passed. Second are the March, is it twenty-eight?
Yes.
March twenty-eight meeting minutes. Again, anyone with comments or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. This Terry to approve is presented.
Thank you. Second?
Can I do that again?
All right, thank you, Dick. And again, let's call for the vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, anyone opposed? Everyone said yes, so we're done with that. At this point in time, I'm going to turn this over to staff to go over these administrative changes.
Thank you, Chair Bobbitt. Assistant County Council Urbidge, I am going to pull up your PowerPoint presentation and share it on my screen. And I also want to acknowledge that we have Lisa Phipps from DLCD present on our meeting, and it is very, very late for her. She's on the East Coast right now, so perhaps in mindfulness of that, we can have Lisa.
We're just gonna have to be very entertaining to keep Lisa away there, right?
So let me share my screen here.
And Megan, let's see, when you put the PowerPoint up, oh, good job. Looks like that worked out fine.
Yeah, I know, I'm doing Jerry. Just kidding.
The star. Okay, for the record, this is Jerry Herbeach, Assistant County Council for Lincoln County. And we'll just have a few introductory slides, PowerPoint, to go over sort of the broad brushstrokes regarding what we're doing. And after that, we'll see if Lisa would like to make some comments, and then we'll put up the text of the proposed changes. And the idea is to go through those in a general sense without doing this word for word and that kind of a thing, so we can get through it a reasonable time. And what I would say to the Planning Commission, I really appreciate you being here. And if you have, we'll go over this, but you know, questions, just feel free to bring them up. So Chair Bobbitt, I think, handled this real well. She said this is like a business meeting, and it is. It's informal. It's and so you know, we're not constrained in any way. This is your opportunity as Planning Commission members to provide input. Understand that no part of what we're doing tonight is going to be made part of the record, the land use record for purposes of what happened and if there's an appeal regarding these procedures. And the public, as it was explained, can view this through the livestream, but it is, it cannot participate. And this is compliant with the Oregon Revised Statutes and the Public Meeting Law. Generally, the Public Meeting Law says we do these, and the public can see what we're doing, but if it's not a hearing, they don't have the right to participate. Okay, next slide, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's go over the process, and I'll try to fill in the blanks a little bit. So actually, before COVID happens, this was put on the back burner for a while. I drafted some proposed changes to the administrative procedure portion of the Lincoln County Code. And and Matt Spangler, who, as you know, is one of the planners for the department and had been formerly the director and had worked for DLCD, very knowledgeable. He went through my draft, and then later members of the, other members of the Planning Department went through it. And we came up with a draft. And and again, it's been put on hold through all this stuff with COVID as a number of things have been put on hold. So I thought that it would be a good idea not to waste the work product. And I asked the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution to initiate this process. And according to our code, the way these things happen is the board adopts a resolution, and in this case, it happened on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. They adopted Resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven, four E. And this resolution initiated this legislative process, directed the Planning Director Anno Hughesen to set a date for a hearing or hearings before the Planning Commission and to provide notices required by law. And for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, commissioners following the public hearing. So one of the options of the Planning Director and the staff here was to do one or more workshops. And I think it's a good idea, and they decided to do that before we have the hearings. And so we publicly noticed this particular meeting, as the chair called it, and 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 we're here today. But before we get to the Planning Commission hearings, which will be later, we have an obligation to provide DLCD represented by Lisa Phipps here with thirty-five days' notice. I gave the citation for the OAR, and that's required before the first evidentiary hearing. And then we're required to do other notices required by law. And we will do that as staff. So just think about that. We're going to get this settled with your initial comments and stuff in the workshop phase. But before we move to the hearings, there will be some time passing. We will provide the notice. We'll get things squared away. And then we'll have the hearing for which the public could participate. And there will be one or more hearings. It's really a proposed ordinance. And the duty of the Planning Commission is to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Once that's done, following public notice, the Board of Commissioner itself will have one or more hearings on the proposed ordinance. And I think the options are they can approve of it as, as you have recommended it, or they could approve it with some changes, or they you know, don't have to approve it. They actually don't have to do anything. There isn't a requirement that they adopt an ordinance at all. However, I, you know, I can't speak for them, but I think that if the Planning Commission makes some recommendations to move forward with this, certainly the board would listen carefully to that. So that's an overview of the process. What I think I'm telling you is that it comes in different stages, different steps, and it won't happen overnight. It's a process designed for maximum participation, first with you and then with the public and you at a hearing, and then with the Board of Commissioners. Next slide, please. So why are we doing this? And I looked at the current code, and I really haven't, you know, I've only been with Lincoln County for six years, and I don't know all the history. But in looking at the numbers in our code, it looks like either the last time this was systematically reviewed was nineteen ninety-five or two thousand and eight a little bit. And so either way, we haven't done what this process for a very long time. And you can imagine that when you don't update systematically your your code, you're going to fall behind in different things. So there have been changes, of course, that have been made in the Oregon Revised Statutes and the Oregon Administrative Rules since then. And so we need to keep up with those and change our language to meet those mandates. We also want to recognize the current procedures that Lincoln County utilizes that are not in the Lincoln County Code. So for instance, it's interesting to me. I could bring up the planning composition section. If you look at our code, it talks about having a planning commission of thirteen members and a representative from the high school and ex officio members. We're not doing any of those things. And so I thought that it would be a good idea that we try to capture what we are doing and what, you know, I think we've been doing pretty well. And the current proposal is that we have a nine-member nine-member Planning Commission. So four, we're going to address procedures not covered in the Lincoln County Code that are part but that are part of the land use process. So an example would be, I think you're all aware that when a decision is made and it gets appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, the Land Use Board of Appeals can affirm, they can reverse basically, or they can remand. And almost always, if they're going to do something of not affirming the decision, it's a remand. So we have no procedures in our code covering what do you do if there's a remand? And so that's an example of, yeah, let's stick this in the code. I think it's a good idea. There are other procedures. For instance, the law allows for a decision to be withdrawn by the Board of Commissioners before a brief, before the, excuse me, the record is completed. So there's a procedure on withdrawal of decision and so on. To adopt more current terminology, I think this is incredibly important. Through the years, the the process has changed and the terminology has changed. And we're going to go through the review types. There's type one, type two, type three, and type four review types, and and I think it's important to use the terminology that most every county and cities are using, and we don't even have that in our code. So we, I think we want to do that. I said to delete unnecessary restrictions and procedures. An example on that is we have requirement now in the code that for a type-one decision, which is ministerial, that the department will make a decision within ten days. Well, nothing in the law requires that, and I think that, except our own code, and that probably doesn't make a lot of sense. So let's make this a little more realistic. And then seven would be to correct internal inconsistencies and typos. Our terminology, or you know, how we refer to different things had to be corrected. We would give a definition in our definition section, but then this part of the code wouldn't match that, so on and so forth. So that's an example. Let me say this. If you're wondering, because I think you did look at what we had sent to you and what we had before. It was interesting to me, our current code has about ten pages of procedure. And this proposed new code procedure part has about nineteen pages. So with these new additions and stuff, it about doubles the the size of this portion of the code. And but I think, I think it's important. So let's go to the next slide.
Hey, Jerry?
Yes.
I just, I thought it would be good to, before you go any deeper into this, just to remind our Planning Commission that so right now, right, we're in a legislative. And Jerry, you may want to help me with this, too, where there are two types, whether quasi judicial is when there's an actual case in front of you, and there's an applicant, and so we have all of the ex parte communication, all that stuff attaches. And that's what we do mostly done. But then a few times, we get into this legislative plan, which is more of a policymaking thing. And as a result, the amount of bureaucracy or the requirements around a hearing goes down radically because at that point, we're supposed to get information from everywhere and everybody, and so it's much more free flowing. But I, but Jerry, the one thing I did want these guys to remember is that we in recent years, we've been in this legislative mode twice that I can remember for, for changes to our code. One was remember when FEMA had that, we had that big, that, you know, the changes in the maps?
Yes.
And John did such an amazing job working to all of the code amendments that we were obligated to keep that program with FEMA. So that was one time when we had a major legislative change for not the administrative part of our code, but to all that bloodplane stuff. And then with the last year or two, we, we received resources from DLCD to help us modernize, to freshen up, just like we're doing with our administrative code, the timber or the timber and ag parts, resource land part of our code. So we've, right, Jerry, we, we basically not in the last couple of years, we, we've done this kind of an exercise, but not for this part of the code.
Yeah, that's a good point. And since you brought it up, and we don't want any confusion, the review types, type one is ministerial review, which is handled by Anno or staff. Yeah, that's a staff matter. That's something that doesn't involve use of discretion, includes permitted uses and so on. The type-two thing is the, what we call administrative review. And that's when the application is made, a decision is made, and it's after the decision made that notice of that decision and opportunity to appeal goes out. You, as the Planning Commission, are used to what Anno called the quasi judicial thing, and that's the public hearing review. That's a type-three decision. And so you're used to that, but you've also done what we're doing, working on today. And that's called a type-four legislative review. And indeed, it's one of the most important things, I think, that the Planning Commission does. You help form policy, and that, that transcends an immediate application. This is going to be applied, obviously, in subsequent applications to come, and it makes this whole process very, very important. And that's what I would say about those things. Any questions?
So Jerry, I'm going to repeat it one more time. It's so important, right? So I have to get familiar with this type-one, type-two, type. When I, when we go around other planners in the, in meetings with other planners, they're throwing type-one, type-two, type-three around all the time. And I'm struggling to catch up with it because we haven't had that terminology. Now, they had the same kind of process. So one more time, Jerry, because it's so important, right?
Okay.
And I'm getting it, too.
Okay.
Item one is we just make it, we're making a decision to move on, but item two is that we're probably approving, and I'll use this as an example, right, Jerry? We approve a conditional use permit. That's administered, that's administratively. It still gets noticed to surrounding property owners. You won't see it if it isn't appealed. But if it gets appealed, then it's before you. But, but then, so that's, so one is just stuff we do every day very quickly. Two is there's an actual administrative decision made with the potential for an appeal. So that's two. And three is like a zone change then, Jerry, right? It goes straight to these guys. We, we don't do anything administratively or, or, you know, even approving it with, with public notice. It goes like a zone change. It goes right to you. Their, our code allows us to do it.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. And four is like the types of things that you were saying. We call that legislative review.
So that's four, right?
Yeah.
So there is, there are also some things that kind of bridge the two-three zone where there's like a conditional use that the staff decides that we could make a decision, but we should take it to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, our, our code, and I don't think, Jerry, that we've, we're doing anything different on that. The code invests the authority in the department and me to decide whether we should, we could, we take any conditional use to you. So the language in there is basically something more, something slightly out of the ordinary or and, and my feeling is if, if we even have to ask whether it should come before you, we'll take it before you. There's so many things that are, you know, so cut and dry. I remember one time we were in front of you. I can't even remember what it was, and it was such a no-brainer, but we had to take it to you. And I, I saw the looks on the faces of the Planning Commissioner going like, well, this is, there's really no room to do anything here. Why are we even hearing this? So, you know, that's, but it's, so if we really feel like an applicant comes in with, let's say it's a conditional use, and it meets the criteria, we're not thinking there's any controversy around, around it. We'll spare everyone the trouble of taking it to the Planning Commission first. But if we got it wrong, you know, you know those neighbors well, if there's, there's, so we don't have very many appeals. You may notice that, that that they, you know, we, and, and, and that's a function of us trying to do, to really sound out in advance at, at our level that something really doesn't need to go to you. And so we get that wrong too often, you'll know, because there'll be appeals of administrative decisions that we make where the people get the notice, and then they'll turn around for three hundred and ten dollars, and, and they can, they can appeal to, to us here, so. Okay, is that responsive to which, yeah, cool, okay.
And, and that's correct that the chair brought up, that there's a interrelationship between the type-two and type-three decision. Sometimes something will start out as type-two and head over the direction of type-three on appeal. So let's go to the next slide.
I changed it, Jerry. Do you see that?
Okay, yeah. So, so yeah, if, you know, it's late, and it's not even late, like in the East Coast late. So I'm going to list here some of the major changes, but you know, we're going to go through those and not word by word, but with a broad stroke. And so we, we already talked a little bit about Planning Commission, how our code doesn't resemble reality for us, and I want to get that trued up. The proposal is that we have a nine-member commission and not all these ex officio and high school members and so on and so forth. Was curious, almost all codes have a section on who can file a land use application, at least the ones I've looked at, and we don't have that. And so in other words, you know, you need to be, you know, an owner or contract purchaser or lessy with permission, so on. You know, there needs to be some controls. You have to have some relationship to the property that's acceptable to, to do that. I think this is interesting and a good idea. The the new legislation calls for pre-application conference. It says that the applicant will ask for it. Actually, what's interesting about the language is it doesn't say that it has to occur, but it does say that it has to be requested. The idea is that pre-application can save a lot of heartache. I know that the planners here are aware of that. A lot of people who want development on their land don't understand the rules very well. And there are some applications that might be near impossible to ever approve. And they need to know about that. They need to know about the different things to consider, what the staff is going to need in the application. I think all the members here of the Planning Department could answer that better. But anyway, pre-application conference is discussed. Now, our quote has nothing about completeness and time limits, and I find that interesting as well. I think, I think you're cognizant that land use is interesting in that there are various timelines. And there are standards for how do you handle it when you get an incomplete application? This goes over that. When does the clock start ticking? What happens if we don't process an application within, well, hundred and twenty days if it's mineral extraction or within a UGB, and for all others, it's a hundred and fifty days? Well, you know, it goes to, it can, it, it can by writ of mandamus head up to Circuit Court, which in my way of thinking is a terrible thing for a number of reasons. Can anybody think of why any of the Planning Commission members here think of why it isn't a great thing for our applications to head up to, to Circuit Court?
Knowledge of the, of the rules of the road.
That is absolutely a, a great answer, Terry. Yeah, the Circuit Court isn't equipped to handle land use. It's not, it's not in their repertoire. The, the other things include attorney's fees that we could be looking at and things a little bit out of our control and in a different way. But yeah, so, so completeness is a very important issue, and we'll put that in the code, I think.
But hey, Jerry, the, the, so the, but a writ of mandamus actually means, right, that the court would instruct the county to do X, Y, or Z, right? That's ultimately.
Yeah, I, I haven't had one of these. I know of other jurisdictions that have had these, and I think, I think you're right. I mean, but, but basically the if, if it ends up in the hands of the Circuit Court, it will generally be that the Circuit Court will issue a decision as Terry was suggesting, for which they don't really know anything about in particular. So let's go over the others, review types. We've discussed those, types one, two, three, four. We have a proposed section, and you, Planning Commission can tell us what you think about it. It's for code interpretation, so it often actually allows a process where an application can be filed to get an interpretation of the code. It covers a couple of things I had mentioned before, withdraw of a decision for reconsideration, and procedure on remand from Luba. Those are things that are land use matters that we should know about. We should have some process regarding, yet they're not in our code now. So let's go to the final slide, and I'll, I'll try to pay attention to this one, sorry. And it's simply, if you have questions, we would very much like to try to answer them. If you have feedback, we take that. We, we do appreciate your participation. The Planning Commission is a, as a set of eyes on what we're doing, and it's an important set of eyes. And so before we get into the text of the proposed changes, Madam Chair, I think it would be good to see if there are any initial comments from the Planning Director or staff or from Ms. Phipps representing DLCD.
Well, let's ask Lisa, Lisa, can you, do you have anything you'd like to? Well, let's ask Lisa, Lisi, can you uh, do you have anything you'd like to contribute in terms of uh, just some general remarks about? How we work with the department or that, any, anything that comes to mind that you'd like to share with us?
Sure. Um, so Lisa Phipps, the coastal policies specialist for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And uh, one, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and this is, this is sort of answering Anno's question. This is uh, part of that relationship that the county has with the department. Um, uh, the. Planners reached out to me, uh, letting me know that this was in process, uh, letting me know what the timeline was. And um, as a result, I was able to take the text that was uh, proposed. And give it a first run through uh, in our department, because what happens is uh, Lincoln County. Will submit their post acknowledgement plan amendment notice to us thirty five days in advance of the first evidentiary hearing. Which is in front of you is the planning commission. And during that time and up to fifteen days before the. Um, county commissioners hearings, uh, the department has the chance to review any ordinance amendments. Or comprehensive plan policy changes. And so uh, able, having the opportunity to do that in advance. At least gives us an idea of what's gonna be coming through. And if there's any. Uh, you know, rabbit hole that a jurisdiction might be going down, it's a really good, excuse me, opportunity for us to say. Hey, um, you know, you might want to redirect, do a little course correction here. Uh, because you're starting to move away from the statewide planning goals. And so in this case, I actually did have the opportunity to run this by. Some of our folks back in Salem, who this is kind of what they do. They, and the person in question that I initially have run it through, her name is Laura Buell. And she's sort of our, I call her this, it's not a real title, but it should be. She's like one of our land use gurus. She's really deep in the weeds. On, on ordinances and language and the flow of ordinances. And so her first kind of brush, uh, brush through this, uh, she didn't really know anything significant. Um, uh, that, that caught her attention. Uh, she did have a question which Jerry has answered uh, for me. Which was, you know, what was sort of the motivation of these changes? And then uh, where did some of the text come from, you know, so where was this language generated from? And uh, Jerry actually answered almost all of that through his uh, presentation to you just a moment ago. So that's, that's really great. And then, you know, her final council, which is also very clearly what's been happening here. Is that the county council uh, be intimately engaged in this process. And, and it's clear that that has happened here. Uh, it will, may surprise you that that isn't the case everywhere. And so uh, this is, this has been a really good process to kind of watch unfold in this presentation here tonight. You know, it's really uh, stellar Jerry, I really, I, I thought you did a bang up job laying out what the, what the process is for them this evening. And what your hopes started gain through this uh, workshop. Um, so that's kind of, that's how it works on our end. And I'm really happy to report that we don't have anything, anything that just jumps out, um, that, that catches our attention as being sideways. And so that's really good. Um, I did have one comment, which Jerry must have been feeling my energy. It was around the um, the pre-application and I guess I had not caught that the language out of the legislation. Place that burden on the applicant, the applicant shall, because it's really odd language. And I, I was gonna make the suggestion, if, offer the opportunity of, you know, why wouldn't it be the county shall, you know, the county shall set. Or require or something like that, but you've, you've answered that. Um, but it might be more something to think about in terms of clarity, if, if that would be helpful. But I'm with Anno, when I started planning, we didn't have any of this type one, type two, type three stuff. And so when I came back into the planning world, uh, I too had to learn that language, you know, uh, all over again. We'd been doing it, but just not with those kind of titles. So uh, it's, it, it definitely provides a lot more clarity. I think to you and staff and the public who's going through these processes. So I think this is just a great night. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
If I can follow up with just one thing that Lisa touched upon that is so unbelievably important in terms of understanding. What makes Oregon's land use planning system so unique, right? It's that there's, that when Senate Bill one hundred was created. It, it vested most of the day-to-day activities with the city and the county, depending on the jurisdiction you're in. To develop a plan, to carry it out, to have a land use plan to work with. But that whole point of the, the Papa, right? That ultimately we will, there'll be this uh, a fit more official notification to D L C D, the thirty five notes for, for our first evidentiary hearing. And, and what Papa stands for is post, it was a post amendment plan, but help me out.
Post acknowledgement.
Post, years ago, we were, thank you, years ago, we were acknowledged, right? Like in nineteen eighty-two. But what, but they want to be real certain, and that's why they've established this, wait a minute, you don't get to amend your code. Unless you send the amendments to us thirty five days in advance, so yes, they can look at them and make sure. I'm gonna choose my words carefully, that we are staying true to the statutes and the administrative rules that stem from the statutes. And that's so important, because that is the connective tissue between the local and the state. That's why we have statewide land use planning system that's actually carried out at the local level, subject to their oversight. Because, because if we didn't have that connective tissue, heaven knows what some cities or counties would eventually do on their own. They have to, they have to stay aligned with the law. So you said that so, in such a diplomatic way, and you said that I wanted to point out that. That it could get very ugly if a jurisdiction wanted to just sort of say, well, I don't like this Oregon land use planning stuff, and by God, I'm gonna do my own thing. And change my code. That's what that's about. And so I think that's really important to just sort of let that sink in for a minute. Because I, I, I think that's hugely important. If we didn't have that, that's what's part of the genius of this whole system. Is that it left room for us to do all these things locally, but it needed to be aligned. And there needed to be some people minding the store in Salem, not smothering us, but working with us as partners, right? And that's the culture that I think we've developed between the locals and the state in this current environment. It's very, very mutually supportive. So whenever we've got a tough question, when we need help, technical advice from the department, we're on the phone with Lisa right away. And, and we're making sure that we have access to, to their gurus in their department to help us go through. Some of these more difficult challenges. So I, I thank you Lisa for letting me expand upon your remarks and really perhaps saying in a way that you weren't. Would think it might be impolite, because of course, we wouldn't, we would never do that. But just in case there are some others, that's what that's, that's, that's what that's all about. So Jerry, my quick question to you though, in, in the follow-up on this is, and we've talked about this before. So if we've had an out-of-date code, how have we been able to, and I'll answer the question at the end of my sentence, or my question. How did, how did we get by with such an out-of-date code? And I think the answer, right Jerry, is that well. When we, when we bump up against something that's not square with the O R S or the administrative rule. Um, we apply the administrative rule or the statute, because we're obligated that they supersede our code, so. And one of the, and I know there was another time we did a code amendment, we wanted to do that just to make sure that we didn't create. You know, that people would look at something and see one thing, because we always had the backstop of the code and the O R S's. But if, but if somebody goes to our code and reads an out-of-date administrative part or some other part of this, it can create confusion and mistakes. So that, that's also a real reason to, to, to go back and refresh our code and to align it. It's just, Lisi, you never had, you've never had grants to uh, and, 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 and assistance necessarily for administrative changes. That I can aware of, but uh, so that's why we sort of did it on our own without your help. But I'm so glad that you, you guys didn't spot anything that. We needed to worry about, but we would have had time to work it out. So that's, that's, that's the, that's the good thing about why we go back and forth.
So Anno, you asked the question and you answered the question, so I've got a question for you.
Okay.
You brought up, you brought up the Papa, and, and so the question is, what's the difference between the Papas and the Mamas and the Papas?
Well, Papas have been around for thirty-five years and the Mamas and the Papas only stuck around for two or three years, because they started to uh. Have uh, relations between them that created a lot of dissonance, and so the Mamas and Papas didn't stick around that long.
Okay, that's more information.
Tell me more information if you really want, Jerry.
Okay, do we need to cover anything before we head to the texts? I don't want the meeting to take too long. Everybody has things to do and if Lisa's gonna stay with us, I don't want her to fall asleep. So um, are, are we ready to go to the text?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the text.
Let me find. Sorry, I should have done another difference. Now that I know that they're used to the high school environment, I don't like that idea.
Yeah, there was like, there was an ex officio, a senior.
I don't ever.
A senior from high school, it was obviously, I, I guess to, to introduce them to the workings of government, and I like the idea too. And we've never done it, and so it's one of these things if you're not doing it, but.
Right.
That's not to say if we had, if there was a student who was interested from the high school, that they could. Participate on a more informal basis and still benefit from.
Yeah, that, that's correct. So why don't, let's go um, scroll down, cause that's just, yeah. We'll try to take one at a time. So remember this rule, this is the format that we use in Lincoln County. Uh, and that is new language is bold and uh. Delete, proposed deleted language is struck through. So what's curious, especially at the top end. Of uh, the code here is that there will be a number of provisions that don't exist in the code. So for instance, I find it interesting, we don't have a purpose statement. So here's a proposed purpose statement. And it lists the breadth of the uh, provisions and, and uh. Basically, what it states is that the purpose established procedures for approval and development required by the ordinance. Appeals from agreed persons and parties and review of any decision by a higher authority. So if, if the. Planning commission has some other thoughts on that, um, we'd certainly take your comments. And I think your comments could come whenever, this process is gonna take a while, um, and we'll have uh. As you know, subsequent hearings and stuff. So uh, we do have a section on commission membership. But I didn't think it was really good, because first of all, it talked about thirteen members and for the. Most of the time I've been here, I don't think that that was really the case at all. And uh, so I, I, I think it may make sense. To just say we're gonna have nine members. Um, and then we have some language from the Oregon revised statutes. Which I think is important. It reminds us that we need diversity on the planning commission. And there's various types of diversity. There's geographic diversity. We don't want everybody to be from the north or south county. Or the Newport area, you know, there are all kinds of interests here. So we want geographic diversity. And then, and then we say that no two, more than two members can be from the same occupation, business trade. And then we specifically um, single out real estate, you know, you're, you're not gonna have. In a, a really impartial planning commission if all nine members are in the real estate business. Or at least we'll get criticism that uh, we're not, you know, we're not fair. And, and so the statute recognizes that, that there should be diversity.
That's not just us, that's. And you know, we already have two Realtors, right? We have.
Yeah, so there, there's nothing wrong with being a Realtor. That's a great thing. You just don't want everybody to be in the same profession. And people will then say that you're not fair and impartial, which is important. So uh, scroll down to the next page. You know, we have some language that you stay until successors are appointed and qualified. Um, you gotta be eighteen and so on. I think four is important to me, because these questions have come up a lot of, uh, many times since I have been counselled to the. Planning commission. And it, it's explicit here, so let's go over this. Five members shall constitute a quorum. And it's gonna take at least five affirmative votes to carry a motion. And uh, I, I, I think that's consistent with an attorney general opinion. But I think that, you, you know, you wouldn't wanna, even if you could, say, well, you know, three constitute a quorum. Or maybe uh, you know, something, you know, diminished in that, you know, two people could carry a vote or so. That, that isn't, that isn't part of fairness, I don't think at all. And um, and then there's a section on removal. Uh, from the planning commission. And uh, it has to be for misconduct, so it's for cause. Or non-performance of duty. And I want you to be aware that this proposal, and I think it came from another code. But it's uh, having two or more, but it's unexcused absences in a calendar year. Uh, so you can think about whether we're gonna have that in there. Um, and uh, there's a section on bylaws. I think that we're supposed to have bylaws, but uh, when I looked into it, I don't think we have bylaws. So um, this suggests that the board by resolution shall establish bylaws governing the commission. I would expect that the way we would do that is we would get input and a draft with uh, comments from. The planning commission and, and from the staff.
Hey Jerry?
Yeah.
How would, it seems, if someone asked me, where are your bylaws or if you do have bylaws, I'd probably give them a puzzled look. And, but I think that it, you know, how, so what, what would bylaws look? I, I mean, to me, this administrative section is, is strikes me as bylaws. But am I, am I missing that? Is there, what, what would be then covered with bylaws?
I have to think about that. I haven't, I, I think that it would be greater detail of what we already are covering.
You have an idea there or?
Yeah, and I, I can try and track some down for you, but it would go into the discussion of what does, what are the responsibilities of the chair? Of the planning commissioner, you know, more about just the internal functioning of the, of the planning commission. And its interactions with itself. Um, it can be helpful and it can, it can, it may also include some of these other things. Like, you know, if you miss, you know, to an, you have to an excuse absences, it can be removed. So there could be some duplication, but it's not unusual to have bylaws.
I, I was just thinking when Lisa was talking, I think, I think some provisions might be selection of a chair. We don't really cover, for instance, selection of a chair in these. And how often would, might this come up for election or a decision? And can you serve multiple terms or not? And, and uh, are there any other officers? There's probably is a vice chair, so probably something covering vice chair, something that says the vice chair. Uh, will fill in when the chair is available and other circumstances. And whether there are any other officers of the planning commission. So those are some things that could be covered.
Some of those things have just been handled by tradition and custom on our part, right? That's the point.
Right, right, right. But I, I think, I think I can think of some things now on bylaws, as Lisa has, uh, as.
We've also got the Roberts Rules of Order as far as handling meetings that would also, could also apply. In some of these instances that you're raising, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah. It, it could, but then there's an issue. Nothing says that you exactly have to follow Roberts Rules of Order.
Oh God, no, you don't want to do that.
And I don't think you want to be, I don't, I, because I think that if you said that and you didn't follow Roberts Rules of Order, there could be. Yeah, good opening. And, and I think we want to keep it kind of like simple in some ways. Um, okay. So that, that was a good question. That's an example when that question came up, uh, how we kind of explored that. So coordination of. uh, how we kind of explored that. So coordination of development approval. So the director is responsible for the overall coordination. But I, I think sub two is really important. I think this was not in our code. It seems silly that it wasn't in our code. And it maybe has been tradition in the way we've applied things. But it, it gives the obvious, which should be the obvious, that we're not gonna be issuing like building permits or uh, on sewage disposable permits and stuff, you know, until final action, including resolution of all appeals has been taken care of. Now, the corollary to this is sometimes things get appealed to Luba and beyond. And unless there is a stay from Luba, you can go ahead and have permits issued and begin development at your own risk, cause you don't know if Luba is gonna remand or not. But anyway, I think, I think it's good that we have the sub two. We already talked a little bit about who may apply, one point twelve oh three. But there has to be a nice relationship between the applicant, I mean, a suitable relationship between the applicant and, 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 and some control over the property. And so it could be the owner, could be a purchaser, you know, you have a execute written contract or something. It could be a less C, but you would need consent of the owner. Uh, and then if you scroll down, there are some other instances. And it could, could include the board of commissioners could be an applicant. So I think Lisa brought up a good point on one point twelve oh four. We may wanna look at the language. I, I, and there may be, it might be, there might be a reason why it was put this way, maybe because of staff is so is so tied up that maybe there could be an occasion where there would be an opportunity for a pre-application conference. I don't know. I need some feedback from staff on that. But Lisa pointed out that this says the applicant's gonna request it. It doesn't say that we will require it, provide it exactly. So I want everybody to think about that language and but the idea is a, a pre-application conference can save time. And I think in, in, when I think about the law, and I've been doing this for over forty years. So much of, of the so-called the law is, is just basic communication, human interaction. So much of what we do isn't technically the law. It's just, it's just kinda like using common sense, right? It, it reminds me of, I talked to my son-in-law the other day and he's a he's an engineer for Intel and I said, well, how much, how much of all the engineering and math do you use in your work? Cause he was just hired. And he said, well, almost none. It's mostly like common sense and oh wait, oh, oh, at the end of the month, I did do this one application, but I almost never do. And I really didn't have to do it. So anyway, it's kinda like that. So we wanna use common sense and I think a pre-application conference makes a lot of sense to me. So let's think about that language. Okay, one point twelve oh five talks about the application procedures. And it, it, it indicates already that we have forms and stuff, but I think the new language there is it shall include any other information deemed necessary by the director to permit a complete review of the application. So you know, I, I think that every application is different and you can think about that language, but it, it's meant to allow the staff to get what they feel they need to really process this matter.
And Jerry, from our perspective, that means thinking out loud that in an application or they've addressed every, everything, all of the code references that have a bearing on what they're doing.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the heart of that exercise. And, and oh, by the way, we have like a thirty day window to determine once an application comes in that it's complete or not. So we, we're, that's one of our for internal shock clocks that we're paying a lot of attention to is the, that letter of incompleteness.
Yes.
Like speak now or forever hold your peace because we have to, we get a complicated application that comes in. It, it, more often than not, it's, we're gonna deem it incomplete because we need more stuff from them. And then we have to be very specific about what that, what it is we're looking for. But that's a really important quietly that you'd never hear about until you've been staffed somewhere. I mean, Liz and Forrest would understand that from her previous experience. But that's a, that's a really important part of the process.
Okay. Okay. And if we talk about completeness, what I'm gonna tell you is that I remember Matt and I working on this. This is the application of O R S two fifteen four twenty-seven. I think that language has changed quite a bit since nineteen ninety-five, when a lot of these rules were written. And in fact, I don't even know if it existed then. But to get to the point, this follows the statute a bit. And it, it it talks about what happens if we get an incomplete application. And I think that happens all the time. And so it, it, certain timelines occur. We could get all, we could request missing information. We could get it all, or they could tell us, okay, this is what you got. And I'm not giving you anymore. I'm not giving you anymore at all. And there, those sorts of statements kind of trigger different things within the process. And also another thing that's important about this application complete date is it has to do with the standards, the goalposts that we're gonna apply as the planning commission, that you will apply as the planning commission to a given application. There's a hundred and eighty day rule that's built in here. And so just, I'd say, there's a lot of detail to this, but I kinda wanna move along because we've got lots of provisions. But this follows closely the, the statute.
Remember, remember Jerry and remember our, our colleagues here on the planning commission, when we did Spooner Creek, right? We realized procedural glitch. We asked the applicant for more time. Or in those circumstances, when they, they certainly feel like they're not being sandbagged somehow by us. They'll, they'll willingly grant us to, to make sure we, we stick within our shock box.
Yeah.
If, if it's going well.
Right. So it, this, this part. Yeah. Okay, yeah. We're, we're talking about time limits here and this relates to the prior provision of twelve oh six. What's interesting is if you go through this process and we don't get all the missing information, some of the missing information, written notice, no other information will be provided or written notice, none of the missing information will be provided on the hundred and eighty-first day after be first being submitted, the application becomes void. So that, that's part of the process in here. But remember, staff is largely gonna be handling this. But when we deal with the planning commission, what we frequently deal with you is in terms of needing to move things along to meet our extension, to meet our deadlines, to avoid mandamus. And I really appreciate, in my experience, the planning commission has been very accommodating to try to avoid that situation. And remember, the rule has to do with the process being completed through the board of commissioners stage. So we can't use up all the time to the planning commission. We have to allow time for the board on an appeal to, to be able to meet these, these timelines.
Yeah. So when I first started hearing about these shock clocks, I thought, I thought it was all sorts. Well, that's a lot of time to work with. Not, not when you factor in appeals and actually having to run things through the, through the board of commissioners, you can on a complicated application, you've gotta get on it. And you gotta start moving it because that, that, that's not a lot of time.
Okay, so let's slow down for a second. Go, go up just a little bit where it says six. We have Lisa representing D L C D here, and this is something she would recognize. That is the concept that if we have a post acknowledgement plan amendment, then then some of this clock stuff doesn't, doesn't apply. And so, okay, let's keep going.
Legislative, right? Right? Remember how.
It's a different rule, different rule. Judicial. Okay. So review types, we've talked about those. I'd like for the planning commission members to take a look at this section. This is all new. This is putting the terminology on paper. And, and it explains each of those, but we've already talked about those a bit. So we've got four types. You, you today and beyond on this are gonna be in the legislative review. Let's just take a quick look at that. It says that it'll be initially considered by you as the commission. You're gonna conduct a public hearing. You're gonna make recommendation to the board. The board makes the final decision on any legislative proposal, in part because it's the way the system is. But you as the planning commission cannot adopt an ordinance. Only the board of commissioners can adopt an ordinance. They only have, they're the only body that has that authority. So let's see what else. They involve the, it says what it involves. The creation, broad scale implementation and revision of public policy is what we're doing. They're subject to type four review and anyway, that's good. Okay, review procedures. So we really had the procedures in place. We didn't have the terminology in place. So most of this is just truing up the language in the statute a little bit. And we, we tell when the decision is final and it's final uh, in different ways, depending upon the type of review. So a decision is final on the date is signed by the director for a type one review, for instance. And, but it, for the others, it, it's different. And if it's a post acknowledgement plan amendment, it's, it's when the notice goes out. But we, we true this up with the statute and and so let, let's, let's move on. See if there's anything interesting here. So you, you see this bolded language like within seven hundred and fifty feet. I can assure you that we've been following the statute, but, but the language we had in our code wasn't correct on, on on the notice part. And you can see where we crossed some things out. And the, the notice, that's the neighbor notice is, is true to up here to the statute. And talk about notice D L C D. So keep going. There's effective date of the decision and so on. Okay, amendments, keep going. Lot of this is, you can tell that we're, 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 let's take a timeout just right here. Let's go up to right here, legislative amendments. I wanna go over one significant thing that I'm proposing. And, or we're proposing. You see that B is stricken there. It, it was it that on these legislative amendments, establish the public need for the requested change and that the public need will be met by the change. I remember having a discussion with Matt Spangler on this. Here's the thing, it's not legally required. And and, but if, if, if you put the public need in there, it is legally required. And, and, and whether it meets a public need, it kinda causes me to pull my hair out sometimes, cause I'm not quite sure what that is sometimes. Maybe it's what you make it to be. But the proposal, and I want the planning commission to think about this, is that we would delete that requirement. I know you've had these legislative things before. And when we've had them, we've addressed that. But I'm proposing that we strike that. Okay, let's move on down.
We'll probably need, when we get, let's just make sure we flag that one for, for more robust discussion in a future hearing, right? Cause.
Yeah.
I, I also feel like I need to understand the implications of striking that better than I do now. So.
Okay. So Anno brought this up at the beginning, which I thought was very good, that quasi judicial amendments. So when we're gonna do comprehensive plan zoning map change, we're gonna handle that as a type three. We're not gonna send that over to staff initially to, to make some sort of decisions. It's gonna immediately go to the planning commission. Okay, let's scroll down. Well, we're keeping, I, I I'd like to hear some input from planning staff. I, I'm always a little bit troubled because it's a non uh, it's, it's not common to have this intent to rezone thing. And my proposal was just to leave it in. But it's, I know it's caused the county some grief in the past. It's an unusual provision. And you know, and an intent to rezone, you can put in, the board can put in some additional conditions, primarily not having to do with residential development. And, you know, do we wanna still have that in there or not? I'd like for the planning commission to think about that. I, I left it in there. But it's something to think about, the intent to rezone. Okay, moving on further.
They intend to rezone, excuse me. Is that from a participant, a property owner coming forth with a, like a a planned development? Or is that just I need to have some more feet over here to, to build my outhouse? Excuse me.
I know you've handled these before. I haven't.
It, it's, in fact, one, one of the more when, when I first got on the, as a director and you know, right as you're going, I'll give you an example, right? There, there's the Alala, the so-called Alala store, you know, as you're going up to the golf course. And when I got, when I came here, it was a very, very bitter controversy. A person had established a marijuana shop in there and that wasn't right with the zoning and this and that. And and so there started to be this controversy. And I remember Jess Bondi, our senior planner from, you know, who's from, and she was still on board at that time. And I mentioned to her about that property and she said, we all better, you all better go up in the archives and look, cause I think there's something special for that property. And I went, and I was like, what does that mean? Like, you know, uh, cause I want this to be, you know, the zone and the zones and the, when people come in is, I don't wanna hear that there's something special. Unless I understand it better than I did at that moment. But, but apparently there is this, this intent to rezone allows for things to happen within the, within the zone that are different than, right. I, I could see the look of consternation on the chair's face right now. And that's what I was like, right? Well, what's that? Right?
Yeah, but it's, it's, aren't these conditions imposed by the board generally and, and then.
Everybody's gotta feel comfortable with them, but if you're gonna go forward with that, but you know, and, and maybe we need to make sure we just flag this for future discussion because I went from feeling hostile that it needed, and I'm doing this from memory, I went from feeling hostile that we should get rid of this. And, or if we're gonna continue to do that, that somehow we better have a darn good inventory of which properties have this special whoop-de-doo thing on it. Or not. So we, we don't inadvertently, it doesn't get disclosed. And then later on you find out, oh, there's a special whoop-de-doo thing.
Yeah, that, that would be a danger. That's true. I mean.
That, that's not a reason not to do it. If there are other, if there are other functions that are being served by this, but God, I think, and I'm doing this from memory, Jerry, but I think you and Matt sort of described, maybe there is was that a non-conforming? No, no, I think in the case of the, the, the store, and I'll talk about that for just a second.
Let's not get into specifics too much.
Well, it helps explain what an intent to rezone is. It's just the way that, that apparently what happened at the Alala, here's an example. The Alala store got to have a commercial use there, but it was specially tailored to only meet the recreational needs of Alala Lake. Which, and I can see the same look of consternation on your face. It's like, yeah, that was goofy and weird. And I'm not sure I would have ever been in favor of that on a staff level or when I was on the, on the commission. But I think Jerry, you, you or Matt just actually gave one or two examples of where, of where it would be as we just to have that tool. I can't recall exactly what those were, but let's make sure when we get that in front of you that we really have, that we're, we're much better prepared to talk about the merits or, or if we're gonna keep it, maybe how we make sure that it doesn't create little landmines out there that. Or if we're going to keep it, maybe how we make sure that it doesn't create um little landmines out there that.
That's fair, that's fair. So let's, I think the intent was to try to get this through in about an hour and a half. So let's move on, um but that there is that process, it's non-standard somewhat in that. I know in Curry County, when I was counsel there for nearly thirty years, we certainly didn't have it. And you know, it's a tool and maybe it's good, but we'll we'll think about it a little more. We have a section on notice of public hearings again, um we're following what's in ORS, so that's why. You see some language in bold and um we're just, these are not major changes. Because we were pretty close before, we're just trying to clean up things here. And uh staff report, I mean, the basic things we're not changing, keep going. Staff report continuance is, I think we trued up the language to the statute a bit, keep going. Final argument, yeah, it's not subject to the limitations there, okay, we got moving on. We have a section on appeals. I think what we wanted to emphasize on the top, if we scroll up again, is just the the appeal requirements are jurisdictional. So failure to fully comply with the appeal requirements is a jurisdictional defect. Jurisdictional defect in land use generally means a fatal defect, um other defects, if they're not jurisdictional. We would say, well, is there prejudice to somebody's substantial rights or if I said that right? I mean, there's kind of a weighing, if some things are bad enough, some things are not. So and we want to emphasize that you need to strictly follow the rules of an appeal. Okay, keep scrolling down.
Well, that's it, Jerry, I think during goal eighteen, we're going through the findings, remember you used the term prejudicial. That that's bad. That that you have you have crossed the line because. Like that was the ruling when we were talking about further working the findings, we declined to do it and as Jerry pointed out to me. It was okay the way they were because they weren't prejudicial, but it really didn't affect the outcome and that's one of the reasons we're comfortable leaving some of those findings the way we left them.
Yeah, okay, moving along, good, good points. The basics of appeal, you can tell we're not changing much, we feel that it it. There's some cleanup of language, but we're basically keeping the process. Okay, so keep going. Okay, so let's stop here on, um there's a series of code provisions on interpretation. And uh there's quite a few of them. Code interpretation, one point twelve eighty-six um through. Let's see, twelve ninety-four maybe. Anyway, it goes on for much of the rest. This allows for the possibility of code interpretation, I'd like to hear input at some point from the planning commission about what you think about this. I think it could serve a purpose, it would, it's a tool in the tool shed, it would not be used very often in my estimation. Generally, interpretation is made by the director. But the director isn't supposed to just freelance this completely. In in the law, what we generally say is we want to know the intent of the board of commissioners. When they adopt an ordinance, so. In case law, most of the case law follows that sort of thinking is, you know, if something's clearing and unambiguous. Then you don't really look at that, but if it if it's ambiguous, subject to interpretation. What did the adopters of that law really intend? So we try to, we try to look at that. We talk about. In this section, there's code interpretation, notice, uh the procedure, how do we notice the decision? And so on and so forth.
So Jerry, looking ahead to when we do, when we do this in a formal public hearing, I I think from a staff perspective, we need to, I need to understand that better. And I think we need to bring several examples of how that would actually play out in the real world for for for. Our commission, because I I need that too, how. Right, so what we we we're, that's a good place that we'll just do more homework on, that's that's what's good about this, what we're doing tonight is we're. Sort of seeing where we all need, we're we're we'll need to focus on that.
Okay, I think that's fair, that's that's good. So just kind of scroll through this, everybody can kind of look. One thing I do like, just hold on to uh this right here. It does allow, and many code provisions have this, and we did not have it, which I think was a mistake, one point twelve ninety, review of similar uses. The director may permit in any zone, any use not specifically described or listed in any other zone. If in the opinion of the director, the requested use is of the same general type, similar to use is permitted in the zone. And similar use is consistent with the statement purpose of the subject zone. And the similar use review and the decision shall be made in the same manner as other interpretations in chapter one, so think about that. But it is, it is, you know, it's kind of interesting how when we're doing, say, a conditional use. I mean, we have, first of all, I outright uses in the zone, then we have a conditional use and then maybe. Something looks like something else, but it's not specifically mentioned and and this seems like it should come up. A certain amount of the time because because there aren't categories for everything in the world, right? It's just, it's 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 going to happen that something. I don't know if you say falls through the cracks, but it's not specifically outlined and I I I would expect that. I mean, if you were to, I don't think you could think of everything possible, but if you did, our lists under permitted use. And conditional uses would be much, much longer and uh and maybe not workable. So I think a review of similar uses is a good thing. And then uh.
The key there as a practice tip, Jerry, that for our commission here is that. If you do that, if you sort of say, well, uh the dog is similar to a this or a that, right? It's just eerily familiar, you know, you're saying, I I think, I think our drafters really meant this activity is so similar to this. That it deserves to be included in it, you just got to make sure that somewhere else in the code, it doesn't call out that activity. Handle that, that's the thing, that's the only trap door that you don't want to haul through. If you're going to do that similar use thing and and you should be, and you and you need to be disciplined in doing it, there shouldn't be like. It shouldn't be remotely familiar, it shouldn't, it should have a real bearing on. Because you're asking that, right, the key test, Jerry, isn't it, it's like, what is the intent of the drafters of the ordinance?
That that is, and you also went over an important thing, Anno, and that is. Uh someone that you can permit in any zone, any use not specifically described or listed in any other zone. So that that is important, that is important.
That's where you make your mistake, is it's like, whoa, wait a minute, that's handled over here.
So. So there's an uh interpretation procedure there at one point twelve ninety-two, moving on. So, yeah, every, this is like any land use matter is, there's got to be a process. And so we have peculiar process to this particular situation and even, you know, how to appeal. And what it an appeal looks like. And uh appeal of the code interpretation is there, you can take a look at that. Okay, let's go over a couple more, two or three things here and then I think we're at the end. And we're going to be real close to about the hour and a half that I was hoping that we would. Out there that we would make available for everyone here. One of the things that, it's just a tool, if if a decision goes to Luba. So that is initiated by what we call Anita, a a notice of intent to appeal. And at Luba, most things are in twenty-one day increments, so you get twenty-one days to do the record with exceptions. Twenty-one day to file the first brief, twenty-one days file the reply brief, so on and so forth. But before the first twenty-one days is up, if the board of commissioners feels that. They would like to have the decision come back to them and reconsider that decision. Uh we have uh the law allows for it, so we're putting that in as a proposal into these. Into this code and if nothing else, it reminds everyone that this procedure is available. You don't have to go to the ORS, O A Rs to uh to check that out and. And and so if if the board wants to reconsider, it can affirm, modify, reverse its decisions, so just be aware. Now, one point one two nine six is really important because I would. Fathom that the major. More often than not, a decision that goes up to Luba gets remanded, that's probably the most common thing.
Jerry, hasn't that that's that used to be like you could count on it, like Luba was like, they always seem to remand everything. I understand they're doing that, your point's still well taken, but they're doing fewer remands these days. Seems like Luba's evolving a little more, sometimes I'll compare to the past, they'll they'll make direct up or down decisions. In a way that they were, it was very rare in the past, they're doing it.
Okay, but but remands are very common and um so. Basically, this gives the procedure on remand, we didn't have that before. The bo- board is to hold a hearing on the remand. Notice is given and it says, how do we give notice? And how the hearings conducted, but what's different about that procedure is on remand, it's not a complete. The issues aren't everything that was in the original application, the issues are those items that are the subject of the remand. So the remand, Luba would say, you did have substantial evidence for these things or whatever.
They're going to spell out, right, they're going to spell out what they want more. More more uh.
Our procedure says that we're going to limit it to those things that uh tho- those issues. That uh Luba identified and uh but there are some tricky things about remand, staff will handle that. One is is that the applicant has to request in writing that the county proceed with the application on remand. They have a hundred and eighty days to do that, if they don't, then the uh decision goes away. Uh it can't, it's not resurrected if there's no extensions and a hundred and eighty days has gone by. And uh final action on remand is do a hundred and twenty days of the effective date of the remand order. The effective day is the last day of filing for a petition for review, so there you did, there are some things that are.
Is is the is in a nutshell that if the count, if if something's remanded to us and the county doesn't take action. If it doesn't do it within a certain timeframe, the original decision is voided.
Let's see, give me a second.
Trying to simplify it, but I don't know if I I might have got it wrong.
So. Uh let me think about what you just said.
Or we'll straighten it out by the time we do the evidentiary.
I I think that the county. I think I think that is correct what you said, I think I I I need to make sure about that, but I think.
I just can't even imagine a scenario where that would happen though, like there's an important case that people care about. Unless suddenly, you know, somebody died and they said, I don't mind or I don't care, so then.
Yeah.
It even seemed to me a possibility, a possibility that we would. I guess, right, that's why I have stuff in the statute, right, anything.
I I I think what is more likely. What what it what is more likely is that the applicant not represented by council just lets it sit for a while. Maybe they run out of money and they had a journey before or something and they don't do anything. I know that um if the hundred and eighty days goes by, then that's it for them.
And those applications are really their deal, because sometimes the the jurisdiction will not, right, Jerry, this happens quite frequently, the jurisdiction will say. We'll go, you you know, you can go ahead and defend this further out, so actually, that's how that would happen, thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
I understand that better, but.
I I can tell you that the procedures are found in the statutes, ORS two fifteen, four thirty-five. We would follow that um carefully and. Um so that, I think we've pretty much gone through um the what I wanted to go through. So I'll I'll hand it back to the chair.
All right, well, thank you very much for sticking to your time limit and I think we all have a lot of things. Think about as we proceed through this and um I definitely would appreciate examples for some of the more tricky items. When you rattle off those numbers, they don't mean much to to most of us. Real life. So are there any uh questions for any of the commissioners at this point in time?
I noticed that there was uh name changes, if you will, from the Lincoln County Planning Commission to the commission.
Yeah, so good question, but the reason is, is as I recall, you look at, we have a definition section. And the definition section just calls it the commission, not the planning commission. So one of the things that you want to do when you're doing code is match. Match the definition section to your text, use the same, use the same terminology. And so there there was a lot of cleanup in that regard.
I noticed that and now also the uh what we call the board commissioners. That has been changed too.
Yeah. Good observations, Terry, good observations, and I appreciate your input tonight, I think that's all good.
Did you have something?
Yeah, just a couple little things before you take this this document to hearing, on the very top in your in your table of contents. You take planning out of the planning, it should just be commission members, so it matches your commission members below. And then there was one other thing, I think that um when you refer to um abbreviations like. Luba here, you should actually somewhere in your document define it first and say, and then will now be referred to as type of thing. Hereafter, it's it's it's, you know, this is what it is and there was another. He took out um, yeah, on um. One point one two four five, under section four. You took out Lincoln County and I wondered why on the zoning map you wouldn't, you would have only left county instead of Lincoln County. I'm just curious about that.
I uh I'd have to pull the code, um I think county means Lincoln County in the definition section.
Oh, okay, so I, yeah, I was just curious about that and then the other thing I thought was interesting on section one point one two five five. Come conduct of the hearing.
Okay.
You don't say anything about asking for the ex parte contact, I don't know if that's something you want to include in that section.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that in there, we just, we do it. I mean, it it doesn't, it it doesn't um. Make our procedure invalid or anything, I mean, it's it's a it's a due process matter. Uh we do it, it's in, it's in our outline, but if you would like it in the code itself. We we can put something in there.
Give that some thought then, Jerry, why don't you and and provide us a recommendation for the before, on that matter, before we meet next.
Yeah, and and I would appreciate, there were a lot of things that were just said in a short period of time and I was kind of looking up some things and all that. So just uh let's get that, of course, we're going to do the minutes anyway, get that reduced to writing. And I'll take a look at all those concerns and make sure that I don't miss something. Just taking a look. Okay.
We all know what it means, but the people reading this, they're clueless.
Okay, anyone else? But, okay, well, thank you again and thank you Lisa for being with us.
And Liz Fox managed to hang in with us the whole night despite having COVID.
Right.
Jerry, that's. How effective you were tonight then.
Well, I appreciate everybody. Well, I appreciate everybody's, every, everybody's participation. And I did just look up county, county is county of Lincoln. But we'll look at all those things that you brought up and make sure that it's, that it's good. And that's why we do this, we, we want, we're not, you know, we wanna hear your comments and make, make this as good of a document as we can. And I really appreciate Lisa being with us. Um, DLCD is, is part of the team in a sense. Um, you know, we, we rely on DLCD, they give us, um, expert, um, suggestions. And, uh, they're part of the process, and for that reason, yeah, Lisa sacrificed being on the East Coast to do this, so I appreciate it.
We get to sleep in in the morning then.
That's how that works. Yeah, thanks, everyone, thank you. Okay, so are there any other planning commission concerns? And when is our next scheduled meeting? I know there was another thing, but I forgot.
There were some tentative date holes, but nothing has been filed for our next meeting at this time, but we will contact you if necessary.
Okay.
But we'll be getting our Papa notice into DLCD. And, uh, so, because we can't have our next evidentiary hearing unless they've had it for thirty-five days and not the informal version.
Right, right, I didn't know there was something else on the docket, but, um, and also as far as procedure, um, are we gonna be staying in hybrid mode? Are we going back, we need to, who makes that decision?
I'm not sure who makes the decision, but we would really value your input on, look, I think, I think that it's, what's happened is the world has changed. There's, it's not a matter of going back, you, you have to have either, it's gonna be hybrid or electronic at this point, right? Because people, that's, that's really the two choices at this point, that there's no going back to just, so, uh, so we, we would really want your feedback. I mean, I like doing things, I, I think both were, you know, but, uh.
I think that the only awkward thing is the public input, um, when the public's trying to participate, sometimes that might be difficult, and you have some here and some out there. And, um, we, I mean, you guys did great during this whole period when we were completely at home. Um, but there's still, seems to be something lost in that interaction, and you don't allow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it's something to think about.
I, I, I think it's remarkable, we came through that, well, there, there's no better example of collaboration than when we did the Gold eighteen with Parks and DLCD staff and all that. But, um, to get through that with, and also trying to get the, I mean, it's a tribute to John and Megan and others that, that are much more comfortable with the technology. And Casey, remember Casey was helping us?
Right.
So I, I, I'm eternally grateful, I'm just amazed, I wondered at the beginning of this, Madam Chair, when, when we were closing down our office and everything like that, I was like, can we do this? This is clearly, some, not, not, not that it was perfect, and it sure didn't help that we had a, a, a real estate boom on top of it, on top of COVID, so.
Right.
Wow.
I just wanted to clarify, we did have a tentative hold of August eight, but nothing has been submitted at that date. So just keep it open, uh, it might be pushed to September potentially, but, okay.
All right, you're right. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.